Good afternoon, everybody. Today is Friday, October 21st, 2022 to 3 o'clock. This is the town of Dewey Beach Public Hearing Executive Session Monthly Town Commissioner Meeting, being held at Dewey Beach Life Saving Station as well live via Zoom. First, going to convene the town commissioners meeting. Before I ask for a motion to drop the top of the agenda, I'd ask that number two. And it become either, I'm sorry. Motion drop the agenda with the amendments, move agenda item number two to become number item number one and move agenda item number five update to updated announcements.
Motion.
Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
With that, opening ceremonies, pledge allegiance, please. Pledge allegiance to the United States, their foundation. Role call commissioners, Commissioner Bauer.
Present.
Commissioner Givens.
Here.
Commissioner Zenzinski.
Present.
Commissioner Perstinger.
Here.
And Mayor Stevens here, all five present. We also have members, we have counselor Lieutenant Hocker and town manager Bill Zolfer, as whether other members, members of town hall here. Prior to getting into the specifics, is there anyone here for general public comment? Not seeing any, we'll move forward. Updates and announcements. Start with item number five, which is Dewey Beach Patrol's report by Beach Patrol Captain Todd Pritchman.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Everyone else, my name is Todd Pritchman, Dewey Beach Patrol Captain, and I'm here today to present to you the Dewey Beach Patrol 2022 statistical report for the services that we provided. We've got a PowerPoint here to guide, guide through visually and also a hard copy. I'm gonna go pretty quickly because of the time constraints, and then we'll do Q and A at the end. And I'm sure I'll be able to A, answer most of your questions, and then B, for sure, answer any that you may have at the end. So the Dewey Beach Patrol, in conjunction with the United States Life Saving Association, is an advanced certified open water rescue entity and emergency medical service provider. That means that the requirements of the patrol meet national standards, are evaluated and reviewed by the USLA every four years for our certification in terms of our curriculum, our mental and physical wellness testing, and also our statistical review, which is what I provide you today. As we move along to the daily operations flowchart. The, that's a flowchart right there. Our daily operations begin at 8:30 a.m., typically with the opening of the facility and engaging right away in any emergency responses that are needed from that point until 5:00 p.m. From 8:30 to 9:00 a.m. is our roll call, our briefing, assignments, special assist, educational certification, whatever is needed in that time slot every morning. Our PT, Emergency Medical Response Practice comes training, trash pickup and so forth begins at 9:15, and then goes to 9:45, where then the staff reports the lifeguard stand for the whistles that you hear in the morning for the sign on, to notify the town that we are indeed on manning the stands and on duty, kind of an alarm clock, if you will. The first crew training for the first year lifeguards as being certified begins at 10:15, and any special equipment needs are met for the handicap access chairs and also the setup of the youth and adult recreational stations that we have throughout facility, beach facility. Then we single, signal and sign on for the day, 10:00 a.m. 3:00 p.m. is our second crew training session, 4:00 p.m. our veteran crew training session. At 4:47 p.m. we clear the water of all use, all users. We evacuate the water to indeed notify everyone that we are off duty and that from, it's implied from that point forward, they would be swimming at their own discretion. 5:00 p.m. is sign off, and then reporting back here to reload equipment, stage, put everything back for the day, and then everyone is off duty officially at 5:30 p.m., unless we are engaged in an active mission to find a lost child or recover something that, that may be needed in EMS. We remain on duty until that event is over. Due to the public requests over time since 1997 in my tenure here with the town, we have evolved the Emergency Medical Services Division out of the Beach Patrol, which is extremely successful and does save lives and prevent exasperated injury. And I'll mention those handicaps or those statistics in a minute. We provide the handicap access service, beach event management, beach ordinance enforcement, night patrol on certain duty assignments, the marine mammal, avian reptile straining report and disposal. We provide a junior lifeguard program, a youth and adult recreation program, traction debris removal, fecal cleanup, dry state bird rescue procedure, incident command, a very successful competition team on local, regional and, and national status, and also bay lifeguarding and bay rescue. And then on to the statistics, the first graph, open water rescue. This means an event where a swimmer or ocean user does not have the ability to return to shore on their own. That constitutes a rescue, and this year we had 18 of those. In terms of open water assist, that's a questionable event. The person's in distress, so we're not waiting around, we're going to get them. That's a 14. This summer was a relatively mild summer. It, in my 44 years of lifeguarding, I think this was the, from Labor Day to Memorial Day, this was the nicest summer that I've ever witnessed. Every single day was amazing on the beach when you cross that dune. So our usages were high, but our extreme weather events were very low, so some of these numbers are a little lower than normal. Major emergency medical responses, that means that advanced life support is summoned to the scene and transport. So that is your hardcore cardiac arrest, unconscious, unresponsive, overdose, sea spine injuries, traumatic events from car accidents and so forth, or bay and boat accidents as well. And our major emergency responses was up to 31, and our minor first aid cases was 28. Missing persons, we had 17 missing persons that we obviously recovered 100% of all those individuals this summer, or you would have known about it, but that's really important, not only for, this is not only for children, this also involves elderly, mentally disabled handicaps that wander off, and there's quite a few of those mixed in there. Beach evacuations are for lightning storms. We have a protocol for clearing the beach as soon as possible and under normal conditions for lightning, and then we also clear the water first due to thunder and other things. So clearing of the beach itself, we had five beach evacuations, complete evacuations, and then three water evacuations. This statistic does not include our localized clearing of water for marine activity. The marine activity this year and years in the past, it seems to be increasing for marine wildlife that comes into shore, and then we have to remove people from the primary consumer, the bait ball, if you will, where the other fish are under there and things, marine activity is more profound, we have to get people out of there. There were seven, I think, marine activity, traumatic injuries in Jersey shores, we, we made sure we didn't have any here, we did the best we could on that. Night patrol this year was only used for the Fourth of July weekend, for the third and fourth, for both of the fireworks, to maintain civil law and keep everybody and check on the beaches during that time. Civil code violations, we had a extremely successful season with PD this year, what a great relationship that was when we have a non-compliant civil violation with alcohol, disorderly conduct, refusal to listen to rules and regulations, whatever it might be, we now call PD, PD comes and does the intervention, and we had eight of those that occurred this year. Please remember our program for educational outreach with the kind of like informational slip that we give to people that are with indeed probable cause drinking, that really helps out a lot and minimizes the, the impact of calling PD for backup. We do provide beach events management, lifeguard of the day, there is a lifeguard of the day stationed here until the staffing and situation seasonally dictates otherwise that everybody's out on the front line, so we provide that service here. This is a high-usage facility during the summer with people coming through, tourists, people looking for information, lost, whatever it might be. Tetherball stations, we are a novelty, there's a novelty to Dewey Beach, this is huge. From 12 months old to 90 years old, you'll see people playing the tetherball all day long, lining up. I don't know of any other beach resort that does this, but this has really developed into an icon here. Handicap chairs, we provide the service, we move the people on and off, if staffing dictates, and we deliver the chairs for the users. We have a process in place through the web, website, and that works very successfully during the time that we are on duty. It's a good public service. Our competition team, just to cut to the chase, we competed regionally and nationally, did very well, but we ended up having six gold medals come back from California in the USLA championship, which is just literally unheard of for a small little beach patrol that has 52 people relative to say 400 lifeguards that are in San Diego County or LA County. Junior lifeguard program is successful as always. We had between 75 and 80 registered participants, and then some, some walk-ins that I still haven't got to all the statistics on there, how many walk-ins we have. So we're between 70 and 100 participants, which is probably what we want, we don't want more, we're doing good with that number. Youth recreation program at night from 5:30 p.m. until about 7:30, lifeguards do that as a complement to the town and work with the kids down on the, on the beach playing games and setting up for them. Contributors to help support our travel team, to donate toward the youth recreation programs and the things at night. We have a list there. Mayor Bill and Janie Stevens, Mr. Raymond Alexander, Mr. and Mrs. Russell Myers, Mr. Monte Montgomery, Mr. Stuart Alton, Ms. Sandra Pollan, Mr. Chris Shell, Mr. Alex Pyres, Mr. Michael Wick, Ms. Ruth Ann Bowers, the Hen Thorne family, Mr. Charles Litchford, and F and S Commercial Cleaning Company. We're very grateful this year, there's many people, donors in the past, I didn't, you know, we don't have everyone that's contributed, these were very good generous contributions that helped fund things. Recommendations for the future, not much change here, any and all events that occur on the beach be permitted and that were given a permit delivery system, which we have in place now, so we're aware, no surprises when we show up to a big wedding or a convention or something down on the beach. Due to dogs and cats on the beach and things that occur there, we always do recommend a leash law. Wages increase. We'll be taking a look at the budget, obviously I'll be working with the town manager, but we are still on the bottom end, the very bottom. I understand we don't have trouble recruiting and we don't have trouble acquiring staff, but just please keep that in mind that we are at the rock bottom salaries of any comparable municipal beach patrol, and we provide much more. Operational start and finish dates, as much lead time as possible from the town to tell me when we're going to start and when we'll end, and that way I can plan accordingly, get the budget ready to go for all that. The mass marketing continue, the outreach on the no alcohol policy to renters, motels, hotels. And then we would like to see no vehicles permitted to be used on the beach during 9:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. during the peak operational periods of the day. I feel as though there's too many trucks and vehicles going up and down the beach during the day, and it's compromising safety in my professional opinion. With that being said, who's questions if I may?
Open it up in a second, but just for clarification, the vehicles, they're primarily the beach concession people.
Yes, sir.
Right, are there any of the vehicles that you see on the beach?
Uh, other than den wreck, which we can't control, you know, that, that's outside of our control, but yeah, that's, that would be primarily the, the, yeah.
So my question was specifically like the, the people use the golf carts around that, like the Planet Ice people, does that mean no Planet Ice golf carts, or it's more just real vehicles?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I should have distinguished between those two, yeah, not the golf course situat, golf cart, but the large automobiles, yeah, you know, combustion engine vehicles. Now, just thank you for all you do. Thank you, thanks for having me.
Mayor, I just have a couple of comments. So Todd does have a wind protocol, in case you're ever asked about that, it is, you know, they've had some issues in Ocean City, but how if you wanted to real quick tell them about the wind protocol?
Sure, yeah, we have a wind mirror, and when we end up with localized winds that exceed thresholds that obviously are putting umbrellas and things in jeopardy, we automatically implement our protocol, we notify line of speech service, we notify each employee, and then we reactively take them all down. So we do not play around with that. We have been very fortunate here, umbrella strikes have been an extreme minimum, we did have one this summer, where all Delaware beaches experienced an immediate, an immediate whirlwind. Bethany got hit the worst, where they lost hundreds of thousands of dollars of umbrellas and chairs, and basically had to evacuate almost the whole front part of town, where this thing just came in nowhere. So we study this, but we do have a very practical protocol for removing umbrellas and anything that may be a wind hazard on the beach.
And Mr. Mayor, just all those contributors to the beach patrol, they were all sent letters of thanks, and then with the approval from the commissioners, we bought them a new gator this year in a trailer, which has really helped them move equipment up and down the beach.
Yeah.
Just a comment, no questions. I would just say that you may not be doing anything different this year than you did years past, but I would say I heard a number of positive comments this year about the job that the lifeguards did on the beach this year, including situations where they had difficult people to deal with, and they dealt with them well and appropriately, so thank you very much for that, and it was, it was a good summer this year.
I agree with that 100%. Part of that was I had an outstanding staff, this might have been the best staff I've ever had, in terms of people, individual.
So Captain, I spoke earlier in one of our meetings commending your group, but you were not here, so I wanted to make sure that I did it so you could hear and pass it along. I was able to watch a number of lifeguards interacting with folks that, as Commissioner said, might have not been in the best shape. They were respectful, people around them were commenting how wonderfully the young people were interacting, and I love the use of the yellow cards, the warning system is fantastic.
Yeah, we put a lot into that educational outreach and public management now, more so than ever before, so it's a lot of what we do in the morning training.
I'm just to continue that point and let you go to where you have to go.
Yeah, a little anxious.
The cards are great in terms of, of controlling or at least educating on alcohol and what are policies in the beach. I'm not saying this just as a suggestion, is there other things I heard for noise complaints and or when there was dogs, I don't know if it would make your team easier if there was also, hey, you can't have this, our policy, you can't have dogs on the beach between these hours and noise perspective, so that was more a comment. And we hear and we heard about the salary issue, and we do expect from one, from budget finance to do, to look again, and where we are comparing to neighboring towns, and we value, evaluate that properly prior to next year's budget release, but I'd ask that, in addition to the knowledge that we just got, we see concerning wind notification of what you have, equipment wise, to also put forth any type of capital equipment that you all that we build our capital budget requests in time over the next few years.
Yes.
My father used to say at Christmas, ask for anything, but be happy with what you get, so it's the same basic principle.
I follow that principle, yes.
Any other questions for the captain?
Thank you.
Thank you, Captain.
Thanks, great job, thank you.
Thank you. In addition to updates and announcements, we have Carol Oberhart here, who is president of Dewey Beach Rehoboth Chamber of Commerce.
Right. Gotta put this to an alphabetical order.
So thank you very much, I just wanted to give you kind of an end of the season update like we did last year, I added a little bit more to it. I started with accommodation, so if we look at the 19971 zip code, okay, the whole zip code, and I compared 21 Wednesday nights to 22 Wednesday nights, okay? And 21, there were 89,474 hotel motel accommodation nights filled. In 2022, there were 93,997. Saturday night, we're pretty much the same way, 2021 was 110,994, and 2022 was 118,492. I thought you might be interested in the percentages for Dewey, and you can see there in what I've handed out, May, in 2021, May was 80% full, this is just Dewey, 80% full, 2022, 72, down a little bit, we had some bad weather, so that showed itself, what just in Dewey. June of 2021, 87%, 2022, 87%, July, 98%, 2022, 94%, August, 98%, 2022, 98%, and then in September, 94 and 86. So many times when we do these, we call, is what we do every week, we call all the accommodations, they tell us what they, how much occupancy they have, because you end only first, someone that's already full, so they tell us what the occupancy is, when we call back the next week, they say, how'd you end up? So we know how they ended up at the end of the week. Visitor guides, we do 120,000 visitor guides, and that timeframe's coming up, anything that Dewey may want to get into that guide. I would say early December is the absolute last time. Typically, we would be getting them in January, but it's been February ever since the pandemic that we could get them. Paper is a big issue with the guides, and we distributed 74,302 to date. Okay, so they'll go out, we do the fall advertising, we fill the bins until February, and they'll all go out. Reorder bags, we did 9,441 reorder bags, so the world just want these bags with coupons in it from the businesses, we're happy to do that, and we deliver them. Let me see, visitor served, so we run the kiosk on the wardwalk, the visitor center at the circle as you come into Rehoboth Avenue next to the museum, and then we have the admin building, and collectively there were 4,646, that is down considerably, that is down considerably. There were times when we would be in the 10,000, so I'm not sure what that's about, but we're going to be on it. Then the movies and bonfires for Dewey, so we did eight movies, and we did nine bonfires. The total cost was 7,804, and the total income was 4,0716, so we took a loss there, a little over $3,000. That is something we feel is a donation of sorts to the town, because the town works with us, number one. Number two, the visitors love it, the residents love it, so it's a positive, our missions promote business tourism and civic responsibility, so there you go, there's the civic responsibility. We did just complete or just completing the Leadership Series. We worked with Leadership Delaware, and we met the registration barely, so I'm hoping next year, maybe we can operate at a different time of year, or increase that number of registrants in that program. That series ends on September 12. And lastly, of course, next weekend is Seawich, so I've left some programs in the back if anyone needs them or wants them. We did again win Best of Delaware Festivals for the Seawich, and you know, that brings 180,000 to 200,000 over the three days. Everybody knows Saturday's the biggest day, and in Dewey, I think Friday night might be the biggest day with the trick or treat, so unless you have questions, that's what I wanted to make sure you knew.
No, I think you do a great job promoting us.
Thanks for working with us.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to thank the chamber and Carol for splitting the costs for us to fix the power outlet that they use the movies and redo the movies and things like that, the chambers split the cost with us, so.
Happy to do it.
Thank you. Thanks, Carol. Good luck next week. Right. Yeah, these are reminder, accommodation tax due, our town manager, I didn't know if we had any additional updates and announcements. I, I do, I have those, I was gonna do those with comments at the end, but the accommodations tax was due October 15th. October. All right. Committee reports, let's start with climate change report by Dave Davis. If he's available.
Hi, folks. Can you hear me? It's a very nice Philly shirt you have on. Yes, I'm ready. Good afternoon, just wanted to give a brief update on the activities that we've accomplished over the year. I'm gonna share my screen for a second and give you a quick review here of what we did, and anyone see that?
Yes.
There, okay. The committee met four times throughout the year, and also attended a seminar that was given in Dover on resilience, I think that's creating, number five here, creating a flood-ready community, several of our members attended that. So, you know, a lot of the time, the early time was spent just sort of getting our feet under us and figuring out how to, how to wrestle this problem, you know, big and complex as it is, and we made some good progress, we created a repository for documents, Ashley was good enough to help us with that, and we began to compile a list of initial funding sources. It's only an initial list, there are more that will be added, but we felt that that was an appropriate activity. We focused on the document, the 2017 Stormwater Master Plan is one of the key guides for our efforts initially, and we found that there are some additional things going on that I'll, I'll talk about in a minute, but the Stormwater Master Plan, you know, well underway in its, its work in town, but that is a good guide for us. We did reach out to some of the surrounding towns, and we spoke at length with Terry Teeman, Assistant Town Manager, and Bethany, she provided some help and guidance in some areas, including the fact that came to light that there's a program that's offered for helping subsidize the cost for people to raise their structures, to raise them out of, you know, out of harm's way, so we found that to be pretty enlightening, and we'll, we'll talk more about that in upcoming meetings. We created the Working Table of Contents for Report to Council, but we held that off because Bill and I attended a Rascal meeting, I guess it was back in July, I, I think, Bill, I can't remember exactly, and we found that there's really a whole series of organizations that have banded together under the name Rascal, which stands for Resilient Sustainable Communities League, and they have a number of initiatives and can help a lot with guidance and help with getting from where we are now to where we'd like to be. And most recently, I've communicated with Danielle Swallow, she's with Sea Grant, who's, you know, one of the steering committee members, and we plan to organize a workshop with the Dewey Council and committee members and the town manager, of course. Hopefully sometime in November or early December, so we can begin to kind of level set everyone's understanding on the nature and the scope of the problems and the approaches we can take to go from here, where we have, you know, just sort of a, an overall idea of things we should do, onto more of an actionable plan and a series of projects that can, can fall out from that. So those are the things we've accomplished in this committee year, and the beginning activity will be to hold that workshop, and I'll be in touch with the folks I mentioned to try to schedule that, you know, hopefully before the end of the year, and there's also a, a Rascal Summit that's being held on December 6th in Dover, that I, I will invite any of our committee members to attend, that would be a good networking opportunity and to learn more about the. That would be a good networking opportunity and to learn more about the things we're studying. So that's really a pretty good overview of what we did in the prior year. And, you know, we have some good plans for the upcoming year. And that's about it for now. Any questions?
Dave, thank you always. All the great work you've done at Dewey Beach. When we came up with this committee and obviously understanding the importance of it. We understand it's a long process, and there's a lot of information out there that we need to weed through in order for the right plan to get to Dewey Beach. So I appreciate all the time you have, and you and your team put forth.
Yeah, thanks, Dave.
Any comments?
Great job.
Yeah, I think I've said this before, but I think it's worth repeating. I appreciate your work on the committee, Dave. I think the committee is moving the ball forward on a very difficult but essential issue to address. You're making the right contacts, you know, I think addressing the right issues or at least learning about the right issues. And so I look forward to the next year and thank you for agreeing to chair this for another year.
My pleasure. Thanks, folks. Have a good rest of your meeting, and I hope you get out in time for a dinner tonight.
We're filling by seven thirty-seven.
Go Phils.
Seven thirty-seven. Take care now. Thanks.
All right, let's move on to the other, the committee reports. I'll go by Commissioner.
Budget and Finance, we have a new chair now. So Dan is putting together first meeting. I think it's November second. Am I correct on that date? Kate, Ashley? November first, November first. And then Marketing has a couple good things, but nothing to report right now. Nothing firm.
Yeah, nothing to report on audit or charter and code. Comprehensive Development Committee, we have a new chairman who has agreed to take over. Jack Redifer will be assuming the role as chair. And we'll also have a new member. Didn't include that in today's meeting, but I will bring that forward for the November meeting. So looking forward to working with that committee again for the next year.
Investment Committee met yesterday. The chair and three of the members have agreed to continue on to next year. Jimmy Lee needs to resign from the committee because of the increase in his duties trying to get his Florida building back from the hurricane. We're actively seeking a new member and welcome input from the town as well. There were no major changes in the town's holding over the prior quarter. The portfolio, I know more changes in our investment strategy over the prior quarter. The portfolio is down variably between four and six percent, but that's consistent with the market. The plan is to stay the course generally, and the fixed income market may be looking more attractive as we move forward.
With my retirement, it's only down forty-six.
That's what everybody in the meeting said.
The Infrastructure Committee is not, not met. You know, they gave us a prioritized list of projects. And I think we're kind of all waiting to see kind of how the town hall comes in, you know, before we kind of get to that and try to tackle how we're gonna handle stuff.
Very good. Moving on, approval of the September sixteen, twenty twenty-two monthly town commission's meeting minutes. Motion.
I'll second. Yeah, so just quick discussion.
Yeah.
This is obviously all on me. I can never figure out where these meeting minutes go. I looked in the calendar invite. I looked in my inbox. But I went to the calendar. You're gonna have to show me how to do it, because I've looked at the calendar invite and I know it's happened. So I'll figure it out later. I'm abstaining.
I just sent, I just sent a last minute email to Ashley saying, hey, I can't find it in there. And she sends me the.
That's where I find the changes.
I had one point, it's probably minor, but I'll mention it. It's on page three at the top. We were talking about the approval for Grotto. There's a reference in here to one eighty-five, twenty-five D and eighty-three, which applies only to outside service areas. They made the point several times that they don't have, they're not going to have an outside service area. So unfortunately, I think it showed up in the amount, but it's a relatively minor point. If they don't have one, you know, so what? And if they ever did have one, maybe it would apply. But I just, I know that for complete accuracy.
Counselor, do you have a?
Well, I agree that if they don't have one, it's, it's not significant. But I also agree with the notion that it probably shouldn't have made its way in since they don't have one. So I guess if we look at the minutes, did we, did we not include, do we not include that specifically as a condition? And it just made its way in because?
Well, most of the focus was on outside service areas, and the Grotto situation was a bit different. They were constructing a new restaurant, didn't have an outside service area. But, I mean, I can recall the discussion that they made several times, they don't have an outside service area, they intend to put one in. However, how it got in there, it just, it just did.
I think we could execute a new ordinance if, if we didn't intend to include that.
Okay, just making sure. So why do we make that modification to the minutes? Well, redo the ordinance to get that signed. Be consistent with meetings.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Any other change to the minutes? Motion to approve the amended minutes?
Motion to approve the amended minutes. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm staying.
We're at a four.
Please, you're honest.
With that, we go to the next open public hearing. Public hearing on ordinance regarding is an application for the restaurant permit to comply to expand a conditional use to Woody's Dewey Beach located in Lake, Lake of York, West Highway, Dewey, Delaware, one nine nine seven one, per section one five D, one D one. Chapter one eighty-five according to definition requirements of restaurant chapter one forty-four, section six. Subject party name is north of Bellevue Avenue and south of New Orleans Street. There's tax parcel number three, three, four, dash, two, zero, point, one, eight, dash, one, three, four, point, zero, zero, dash, C one, N C two. Live, the R B two zoning district, refers to the planning and zoning commission. Is there anyone here? Well, first of all, I'd just like to make a comment. I did receive a phone call or to the text from Jimmy O'Connor. He is out of town and on vacation. But if anybody would like to have him call in, if there's any comments, he'll call in. Oh, you're right. I'm sorry. I apologize. I apologize. So strike that. And we're gonna move toward to the opening the public hearing with Dewey Beer Company. Do I need to read all those numbers and things back again? Thank you. I forgot to make the note of that.
Thank you. I wish I was on vacation, but I'm not. Good afternoon, Blake Carey. I'm an attorney with the Smith Firm in Rehoboth Beach. Here on behalf of my client Dewey Beer Company, which is actually Dewey Beer and Food Company LLC, does business at twenty-one hundred Coastal Highway. I have Brandon Smith here with me as well. We're seeking the town's approval for a conditional use to allow my client to utilize the southern exterior area of its property for outdoor dining. This is the area adjacent to Salisbury Street and perpendicular to Route one. Should have received a proposed floor plan from Design Del Marva. That includes the proposed area, the patio, including barriers, location of dining tables, and the schematics. All in all, my client's seeking approval for an enclosed patio of roughly twelve hundred square feet. That's comprised of one eight top, ten four tops, and four two tops. The patio is enclosed by way of wooden fencing and landscaping beds, all forty-eight inches tall. Fence will be gated. There will be access to and from the interior from the existing exterior doors there. Proposed patio also includes a server station. There will be no bar seating nor any additional bars or bar areas there. It's all dining. And then the proposed patio complies with the eight-foot front setback and the six-foot side yard setback. As you know, Dewey Beer Company has been utilizing the patio since, I believe, May twenty-sixth of twenty twenty for outdoor dining with no issues that I'm aware of or that my clients may be aware of. Its use of the space has been essentially without incident ever since. So our position, the C U salt is consistent with section one eighty-five, seventy-four of the town code of Dewey Beach. Particularly, the location is appropriate. It's positioned adjacent to the restaurant building will be ADA compliant and allows for safe entrance and exit from the restaurant to the patio and vice versa. Location, as I mentioned, will be handicap accessible. Will be enclosed with a combination of a gated fence and landscaping beds. And it's been essentially since May of twenty twenty, our position that the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare have not and will not be adversely affected by the expansion of the dining into the patio. There will be no music or outdoor speakers. Location is gated, as I mentioned. And again, there's no request to expand the bar area there. Will not contribute to a traffic problem. It's not required to have parking based on the square footage there. It's well under four thousand square feet, including the patio for patron area. And it also does allow in the back behind, I guess that would be the eastern side of the building for ingress egress for delivery trucks essentially that can actually pull in there. Finally, due to the proposed gated enclosure, it's our position that necessary safeguards are provided for the protection of surrounding property, persons, and neighborhood values. For those reasons, it's our position that the town code has been met with respect to the proposal. Certainly here to answer any questions you may have.
Are they inside at this time?
Inside, I am not sure if Brandon's able to answer that. We want to.
And you'd be adding fifty-six.
Yes, fifty-six, correct, which will only increase the amount of food sold versus alcohol sold there.
The outdoor dining, it says the outdoor dining area, this is in the conditional use application, will have a capacity for eighty-seven persons with fifty-six dining seats. I'm not sure what the eighty-seven refers to.
That was referring to basically ability to walk to and from tables, et cetera. But the tables will be utilized for dining. There won't be standing room areas or anything like that.
Discuss the draft ordinance, I guess, later. Okay, then I'll hold that.
I think Dewey Beer has been a great partner here in town, and I'd like to see, I'd like the motion to approve this.
So we have to, we have to close the public hearing.
Yeah, we're gonna invite others to speak, and there may not be anybody. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there, is there anyone here from the public hearing perspective to discuss Dewey Beer Company? Dewey Beer and Food Company LLC. I think, okay, with that, I'd like to close the public hearing. And from a commissioner's perspective, to discuss possibly go to a food ordinance regarding condition use permit as an application, Dewey Beer Company, I can read all of the rest, but I don't know. So that being said, I would just like to point to the conditional use site in terms of regards to the ordinance. Whereas this plant, the Planning and Zoning Commission conducted a public hearing on the seventh day of October after proper notice and based upon record studies that the hearing recommended to the town commission that the application this can do, condition use be approved. So with that, is there a motion or conversation? Motion. Motion, Commissioner Bauer?
I'll second it, but I think Gary wants to have a discussion.
If my permission just is to be, I apologize.
Oh, okay. Okay, so in the draft ordinance, we point number ten, the outside service area shall be cleared at eight thirty-five eleven P M, each business day. That duplicates what's in one eighty-five, twenty-five D, one A three. So it's, there's no harm, no foul here, but I'm just, just pointing that out.
So, so I think to be, we were anticipating this question, and this was, I think, meant to reflect the recommendation that came from the planning commission. So I think you established, you as a council at the last meeting established that you didn't think it was necessary to duplicate that because it's referenced in the, in the ordinance that is, they're also required to comply with. So I think it would be appropriate for you all to strike that. But we didn't, it was actually this idea actually to go ahead and strike it in advance of sending it to you. And I thought, well, we've gotten some complaints last time about how faithful we were to the planning commission recommendation. So let's just.
Okay, so, do you have more questions? I have one. Okay, go ahead. For the last couple of conditional use approvals that we did on September sixteen, there was a paragraph here that says state law and relevant state agency approvals. We added to the previous conditional use applications that we reviewed. A phrase at the end that says, including but not limited to the provision of sufficient bathroom facilities to accommodate and increase patron capacity. As I recall, the Planning and Zoning Commission did discuss this, and they decided that that was the purview of the Board of Health. And while that's true, I don't think there's anything in the language that we included in the previous approvals that really contradicts that. I think this is, this is an issue that was raised by a member of the public, both with us as individual council members. I think they also raised with P and Z. I think it's appropriate to include here, just as a reminder that is an issue that needs to be dealt with. Particularly since the capacity, seating capacity here is being increased by about sixty percent. Now, you know, that's, that's pretty substantial, I think. And I, I think it is, would be appropriate to include this as part of the language that's included here for this, this approval. That's all I have.
At the end of paragraph.
So, yes.
You mean as a whereas?
No, this, this is, it would be point number four. It would read all authorizations contained herein, a big tier of insufficient compliance with applicable state law and relevant state agency approvals, comma, including but not limited to the provision of, provision of sufficient bathroom facilities to accommodate and increase patron capacity.
I think it's a good additional one that should be on the other ordinance as too.
I'd like to amend my motion to include that.
I'll second. And then continuing discussion. Brad, I wanna, I wanna understand something about the duplication between one eighty-five, twenty-five D and what's in the ordinance. Was, I know that basically we did it with the language in our ordinance says as amended. So if one eighty-five, twenty-five D changes, then the requirements change. I, I wasn't listening in to the P and Z meeting. Was there intent and reason for the duplication? That they wanted the duplication there so that as commissioners, we have to go back and take the requirement away, even if one eighty-five, twenty-five D change? Or was that not their intent?
I, I don't believe that was, that was an intent.
Okay, so it was just duplicated because it was duplicated. Okay.
With that being said, for the vote.
So just one, one quick thing, if you're ready.
Is ten in or out?
Ten is out.
Thank you.
With more being modified.
Got it.
Yeah, it was not a strategic decision to leave that in in case the law changed. There's a blank in here for inserting the name of the establishment. It says, the version that is posted says, insert name here at the last whereas clause. Of course, that's Dewey Beer Company, and you're gonna do that for all of them. And then this is an application for an extension or expansion of an existing conditional use. So that, that should be referenced in the last where, the second to last whereas clause in red, where it says, where it refers to an application for conditional use. So it's an application for an extension of existing condition. That's all I have.
And credit the council, this is, these are consistent with the other two ordinance that we have, as well as consistent with one that we've already approved for amendment.
I think so, yes.
That'll take it to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Goes to Dan. Those guys. And just from a council perspective, reminder, this is approving the extent, as we go through these, extension of the premise. This doesn't mean that they don't have to go through the normal building permitting process if there's a fence add and.
Yeah, so that, this last application didn't involve any new structure.
I didn't know if that was the case, basically, when they said about the fencing when coming in. That's why I went with the wood fence. I just wanted to make that clear for the record. Next is the old number one and the new number two. This is for the conditional use for Woody's Dewey Beach. This also. This also. And assuming the same changes that we incorporated into the last one in terms of insertion of name. In addition to number four in terms of your bathroom, the elimination of number ten. Uh, because redundancy. Sir Connor is available. If there's any questions, there's not a slide on the council who's just out of town, he can call in. So first of all, says, as you open up the public comments, is there anybody in waiting room for public comment? That will close the public comment and put it's commissions.
Have a question, um, really to our council. Uh, do you think it's necessary for us to, to contact, uh, Jimmy and, and asking if he has any objection to the conditions that are included here?
Um, I think your, your options are either to put this on the table until he can be here or to act on it. But I don't think it's your responsibility to have him, um, acknowledge these conditions in order to enforce these conditions against him. This is a posted ordinance and he's charged with knowledge of the ordinance and if he doesn't like the conditions. Um, then he maybe should have asked that we not have this on the agenda while he couldn't be here.
Yeah, I'd like the motion to approve it.
With the modifications that we're seeing in the prior.
Correct.
Is there a second?
That's my second.
Motion second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Number two passes. Then the same conversation we had. Uh, number three on this is to, uh, discuss the public hearing on the ordinance regarding official use for the Dewey post. For those, for information, the old man's talent, um, open that up for public comment. Nothing, uh, no public comment?
No one in the waiting room?
Close the public comment, um, no, and then we'll move on to the second possibility vote to approve. Again, commissioners, the assumption is that we're going to continue with those amendments that we've already discussed.
Motion, motion to approve.
Amendments?
Amendments.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. All right, on to the regular agenda. Uh, number four, the second possible to approve amendment to the employee manual. Uh, this was brought up in the last meeting, we'll discussion, um, either town manager or, uh, she knew. Or just give an overview, town manager?
So when we, um, looked at the new policy manual for our employees, there were some, after it was passed. Uh, when we were going over the manual with our employees, there was some concern about. The ability to make a grievance against the town manager, a decision the town manager had made, or some policy the town manager, uh, had put in place. So, uh, we went back, uh, the first time we came back to you, um, there were some questions about that. It didn't pass. And then this time, uh, Commissioner Persinger provided us a draft. Uh, myself and, and Miss Hall looked at it, thought it looked okay. We sent it to our H R. Uh, consultant Diane Caffinelli, she reviewed it, she thought it looked okay. And then, um, we brought it back and provided it to you, Mayor, to be able to agenda.
But all these are mega, a motion to approve, obviously, there's gonna be some conversations, maybe most to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Uh, from conversational perspective, we were concerned, this is council, in this last meeting. Um, possible conflict to influence with the whistleblower policy. And you can just make a comment on that, and then I'll ask, first to comment, uh, that what he sees is consistent with.
Okay, thank you. So I just want to remind everybody what the whistleblower policy is and maybe what it isn't. Um, the, the whistleblower policy protects employees. Who would, uh, otherwise be fearful of making or fearful of, of retaliation for making a report. That, um, a, uh, someone above them perhaps in the chain of command. Was either self-dealing, you know, committing some act of, of fraud or, um. Furthering policies that put, uh, fellow employees at risk, um, for their public, for their safety, excuse me. So, um, that's what the whistleblower policy is about. It's about, uh, preventing. The reporter of, of some such thing from being retaliated against by a supervisor of theirs. I don't think it's, it is harmful to make reference to it in this policy, but. The, the whistleblower policy doesn't really relate to grievances, if you will. Like grievances, I, are generally complaints or concerns you have about the manner in which you're being managed. As opposed to whether or not.
Fraud or.
That, yeah, the town manager's committing fraud. So again, I, I don't think it hurts to leave it in there. Um, I don't. Think it, uh, helps a great deal either. So, those are my comments. I would remind everyone, um. That also that, uh, some time ago, uh, this, this council works. Hard on amending its code of conduct, uh, language at chapter ten. And ultimately concluded that creating its, its own, um. Uh, ethics committee was not a wise approach to take and instead we rely on the. Uh, Public Integrity Commission to investigate complaints regarding ethics. All the provisions in chapter ten that relate to a duty to avoid conflict are applicable. In my opinion, I think we've, we, that's a conclusion we reached a long time ago. But the references in chapter ten to the ethics committee, um, are like obsolete. Or moved because we don't have one. Um, there's a state agency that conducts those investigations if necessary. So, once again, I think if, I think having a reference to the Dewey Beach Code of Conduct in this grievance. Uh, policy is, um, not inappropriate, um, but. It's just, it's a, it's a limited, it's a limited subject.
Got to put it that way. Commissioner Persinger?
Yeah, what the draft that we had, uh, in September to look at, unfortunately wasn't consistent with the whistleblower policy, so. What I, what I did in redrafting this was to go back and to use language from the, um. Kind of whistleblower protection policy, particularly, uh, just, just to identify those situations where. Uh, there would, could be an appeal to commissioners as opposed to just working within the town staff. Uh, and that's, that's why I included in here, uh, and this comes from the whistleblower policy. Uh, anything that the employee believes violates the town Dewey Beach Code of Conduct. Or is a suspected violation of laws or regulations that govern the operations of the town Dewey Beach. So it, it's only in those situations that you would make an appeal to the commissioners. Uh, with the exception of termination, there is a, in the employee policy manual, there is a, an ability to appeal to the commissioners, um. Uh, by, by an employee who has been terminated. The idea was everything else, those are decisions that are up to the town manager. He's the final authority on that. Uh, if we're talking about promotions or salary or anything like that, that is in the town manager's, um. Purview and, and not the purview of the, of the commissioners. I think we made the point earlier, uh, when we talked about September that, you know, we're basically a political body and we all want to be. Man, trying to manage personnel, um, and that, that's really not our role, so that was the reason I, I wrote this as I did, um, and, um. Whether you call it a grievance or call it something else, you know, it's, uh, where you have a problem, you have a disagreement, you want to. Object to, uh, an action or decision that the town manager has, has taken. Uh, then there is a policy here that tells you when you can go to the commissioners and when you need to resolve that through the town manager. So that, that was.
Hey Gary, what's good? Thank you for, uh, for investing time and energy into this. I think it's. The initial point was to make sure that there wasn't a gap between what we had from whistleblower perspective and what was.
Yeah, thanks, Gary.
With that being said, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Yeah, second.
Second.
Did have a, did a, first of all, Gary, I do thank you and also for making the changes on the timing so that we're not in a. Crazy rush to do something that would be potentially not thorough. Um. My only question is really to our, uh, counselor and that is, do you think the language in here protects us from? I hate to use an adjective, but getting into the weeds on employee issues, which is really what. I personally, I don't want us getting into the weeds on employee issues unless it really is something that needs to come up with the commissioners. Um, do you think that the language out of it protects us from being in that position?
So I think there's some reasonableness, um, standard that's gonna apply that would, would allow, um. You to quickly come to the conclusion, um, that. This is not an appropriate matter for you to conduct an investigation on because it, it deals with. Um, or management style complaints and, um. So I don't, I don't think there's any way that we could construct this so as to. To preclude someone from making some type of complaint that came to you that really, really, you don't envision trying to handle. So it, we, you know, could we make a, could we add a paragraph that tries to say that in the end? I don't think it's gonna make any difference. You're, you're still going to have the potential of someone making a complaint that you don't. Think warrants an investigation because of its nature.
Right, okay.
Uh, the only other comment that, just a brief comment is that, do we need to include your. Uh, process by which that grievance. Like, it's assumed now that we would be written communications to the commissioners and that we would. Potentially meet and then the executive section was, executive section, special section. It's kind of implied, but I didn't know if we needed to be.
Anything that deals with personnel is, is required to be in.
Any other? Would that, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 That also passed, she done with it. Uh, we've already had heard from Todd. Uh, number six, discuss the possibly go through proof of resolution regarding employee bonuses. Uh, I'll ask town manager both of them.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So there's two times during the year when the employees are, um, eligible for bonuses, ones on December first. And ones after the audit is completed. After discussing with, uh, with Ms. Hall and with, uh, Lieutenant Hocker, what we had were what we call. Year-round part-time employees, the way that, the way it was written, they were all eligible for those two bonuses. After sitting, and most of them, correct me if I'm wrong, most of those were some of the police officers that we hire. To fill in during the summer and during, during our big events. So, but they worked a very limited amount of hours, um, and Lieutenant Hocker can actually go into those if, if necessary. But the way the ordinance was written, they were still eligible and they received for years those bonuses. So spoke with Lieutenant Hocker, spoke with Ms. Hall, came up with an amount of hours that we thought was fair. Based on that, so for the December first one, they had to work at least a hundred hours in the prior pay cycle. To which the bonuses will be paid and then, um, for the, for the audit one was a hundred and twenty regular duty hours during the budget year. And I, as town manager, I think that's fair. Uh, Lieutenant feels that's fair for the individuals that he hired to work on a year-round kind of part-time basis. And, uh, H R also feels that it's fair. That's why we came before you with this amended ordinance.
Okay, makes sense.
Makes good sense. Yeah, I had some, I had some questions and comments and it's, um, what I heard you just say was. Uh, in section one, and it took the. Hundred fifty dollar bonus, an employee has accumulated a minimum of a hundred working hours in the prior pay cycle. Is that, is that correct? Is what it says here is prior to the pay cycle, which is not, not clear.
And it, and it, that's a great point. Cause the pay cycle is only eighty hours, eighty hours.
Right.
So we probably should have in the prior month. Prior to.
Thirty days.
Cause you're getting out of the world with just twenty, two thousand eighty hours a year, a hundred sixty-seven per month.
Could have been that, that thirty days.
Uh, I do have a question. Why is it a hundred dollars for two hundred fifty dollars, but a hundred and twenty hours to get a hundred dollars?
So that's what was recommended to me by, by the lieutenant, but, but also, uh, it's been a hundred dollars for the audit. It's been two hundred and fifty for the December first. When, when we looked at the audit, the audit, you know, is a year-round, um, process. A lot of work goes in by our staff and by, uh, by H R, uh, finance for get this done and. Uh, was decided that it'd be a hundred and twenty hours, correct?
Correct. Uh, what we looked at was, um, with, with that being, uh, you know, a, an audit, um. Result of the audit, we can get that bonus, we looked at the entire year, so basically broke it down to ten hours per month. For a hundred and twenty. And, and the census of Christmas, it's not really a full year, so they can still work another two months to, or, you know, a month to get.
This is just grammatical, um, where it says, uh, in which the bonus is awarded and it says now, and. Must have. And substitute that with who has. So who is employed by the town Dewey Beach on December one of the year in which the bonus is awarded and who has accumulated a minimum of a hundred. In the prior month. Prior to. Prior, prior to pay cycles, in which the bonus. In the prior two pay cycles before the bonus is to be paid.
Um, yeah, I need to pull it up on my. In which the bonus will be paid, it's saying as of the December first.
At the last part, so if we say, um, of the year in which the bonus is awarded and who has accumulated a minute. Minimum of one hundred working hours in the prior two pay cycle.
For consistency, why don't we just, so one says one twenty, one says one hundred, I'm okay with making them both one twenty. Is that number?
Well.
But, but I know that's not really, that's not the issue with this. I, I don't have a problem with a hundred. You've got a rationale, you're comfortable with it. I don't have a problem. I just want to make this clear so that, you know, everybody understands and knows whether they qualify or they don't qualify. So we just need some better language.
More, if it's prior to pay cycles and it's on December first, are we just talking about the month of November? We're looking at a year leading up to that payroll, so it would be the prior eleven months.
So it shouldn't say K, K cycles.
So it's not the prior pay cycle. Okay.
Accumulated a minute of a hundred working hours over the past year. That's easy.
Is that what the intention was?
Correct.
Hundred hours. Hundred, hundred hours to get the Christmas bonus, hundred and twenty hours to get the audit bonus.
Yeah, so we just add, and is it the budget year or the calendar year?
Just the, uh, it would be a calendar year for the Christmas bonus and a budget year for the.
Well, can you amend to say, calendar year and budget year?
The, excuse me, section two already has budget year, so it's only section one that we fix.
Yeah, I think we should probably be consistent, say one twenty for both of them. And then do it on the budget year. That's our fiscal year. It doesn't really matter what the calendar shows.
We don't have season.
Right, doesn't matter. But yeah, I'm just thinking from consistency. I'd like to motion it that way, if I could.
Second.
Is, is that okay? I mean, you're tightening the requirement for the bigger bonus.
Correct, yes.
Again, this is, is really clarity. It reads right now, says that, that fiscal year financial performance. Not sure what budget goal really means. Does it mean if, if we achieve the surplus? Or better than the surplus that is projected? What if we get less than the surplus that was projected? If we still achieve the budget goal? So aren't we really talking about just achieving net, uh, fiscal impact for the budget year? Expenditures less, uh, I'm sorry, revenues less expenditures? Is that really what we want to make as a qualification for the, for the bonus?
Yeah, I, this conversation, I could, I could argue that the achievement of that bonus. The achievement of our financial performance is outside the control of most of these employees. Whether or not we're plus a dollar or minus a dollar based upon the approved budget. But I might, my, my view of this is that the bonus was intended to, this, this resolution was intended. To not provide a bonus to somebody who had one day on the job or seven hours for the job.
Right.
And that not necessarily whether or not they're going to get the bonus. I don't think us as commissioners can say. You know, you misify it two percent and therefore not give out fourteen hundred dollars. That, correct. So I, I agree with you, Gary, but I don't know if it needs. Times and bonus here is just trying to make sure that we're not have, we're not required to pay a bonus to somebody who started this November eighteenth. On this, as as a December.
Yeah, but the issue is whether or not the bonus is available at all to anybody. That's what I'm trying to get at.
So starting in line four, starting in line four, for the next four lines, it says the bonuses are only available if the town meets.
I mean, I, I think what was intended is if as long as the town doesn't go into a deficit, then the employees would get the bonus, so. I would change this language so it's clear to say um. See, and is employed by the town of Dune Beach on the last fiscal year. If the ratified report by the town's independent auditors indicates. Boy conditional bonus period. I think that's clear. So as long as there's no deficit, then the bonus is uh is okay.
That makes sense. I mean, if we're not having a good year, why are we handing out bonuses?
Well, and I would imagine if that was the situation, in that, that point in time, town manager would come forth with a, with a special ask. Or whatever it might be.
We can override it.
Yes.
I just have one question.
And I. You go, speak your name, state your name, where you're from.
Question I have, and this came up this year. Because we've had turnover. If someone is employed on March thirty first. And they leave in June, we pay the bonus in September. Do they get it?
My impression of every corporation I've been, you have to be in good standing and clear.
I under, I I, that's what I believe, but I'm just asking, what is your intention?
Do we have that language in?
We could just change, we could add the word current on both paragraphs.
Yep.
Okay, I'm just.
Before employee.
Well, it says who is employed.
But if they're employed on March thirty first. So I'm here March thirty first, June first, I hit the lottery, I'm gone. In September, am I going to get that bonus? That's just something I'm asking from the financial.
That's section one, line two, if you put currently in front of employed at the end of the line.
Yep.
That should take care of that.
I'd like to amend my motion on that.
The section one. Who is currently. To each non seasonal town employee who is currently employed by the town.
Four unemployed, put currently on both section one and two, section one, line two, section two, line three.
Yes.
And I think you have the strike on the last day of the fiscal year.
Yeah, cause if they leave, what's your saying is they leave, yeah.
They're not current anymore.
Yeah.
But if they're not employed on the last day of this.
Yeah, cause if I call them.
They could be employed on the last day, but. As you suggested, leave in June, so by the time you pay it, if it did not be current employee, you not get the bonus.
Call that Paul.
I'm good with that.
So there, yes, there are some.
Could you restate your motion?
All right, paragraph one, last line, make it the current employee, paragraph two. Uh, the, the second line? Fourth line.
I wasn't serious.
Current, currently in strike last day of the fiscal year.
And strike last day of the fiscal.
Second.
Any other discussion? We'll clean it up actually, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That's a good one.
Number seven. So on the agenda is to review and discuss possible review, discuss possible to approve the current committees, committee chair. Committee goal focus, commission liaisons, that document had been posted on the website. Um, I can assume that the commissioners have reviewed the committee list. So from a discussion perspective.
Um, as noted in my earlier report, Jimmy Lee can no longer participate in the investment committee, so we would be seeking another member.
Who will strike. Jimmy Lee from.
Invest.
Investment.
I have.
Commissioner. First we had commented on the addition of obviously change from Dave Davis to Jack Redifer. I believe you have another addition.
I'll bring that up in November.
Okay, in November.
Oh, no, sorry. I had two comments on infrastructure. We need to flip Drew Martin and Jim Tyler. Uh, Jim Tyler is still the chair of the structure. Uh, it's just a mistake I think I made, I guess. And then um. I guess the, well, I have three things. The second thing is Gary, you've got a lot of committees. I'm not. Trying to poach or anything, but if you want like someone to be a liaison for one of the committees you have. I'm happy to do that since I just have infrastructure, so I'm just kind of letting you know that. Um, and then the third thing is on the comprehensive development plan. I've wanted to get everyone's thoughts on this. You know, we're, we're so fortunate when we have um, you know, residents and constituents who'll step up. And offer to be on the committees, much less the people who are willing to do a lot of work on multiple committees. You know, there are. Few people who are willing to do that and we should be really thankful. On the CDP, I, my, my concern is just conflict of interest. And specifically with, you know, the Redifer family basically, you know, physically owning probably half the physical land in town. And then having the chair of the committee being a member of the family that owns it and a shareholder in that. I just wanted to get everyone's feelings on it. I mean, I don't, it's not like I'm firmly opposed, but I just see. We, we had a situation over a decade ago where. The comprehensive development plan was determined to have the force of law in terms of what's allowed and what's not allowed. And so it's a very powerful document in terms of what happens in town. And I think, I think the red, we're hoping by the sea and the Redifer family have been great stewards of their properties and the residents and whatnot, so there's no. Concern there. I'm just wondering what the commissioners think in terms of the potential conflict of interest, you know, with this and whether. That's a serious enough issue that we should, we should pause on, does this make sense to do this or not? And I'd like other people's feedback on that.
My perspective is, it's true. Uh, it's not the purpose of this committee to make any changes in the comprehensive. Uh, it's really the kind of the, the group that nudges us and nudges the town. Uh, to pay attention to what's in that comprehensive plan. Um, and develop some actions and some strategies that are intended to meet the objectives and those goals. Um, so I'm not, I'm not concerned at all. One of the things that Jack said in the meanwhile, I was talking to him is that. Um, if there is any issue that comes up where there's a potential conflict of interest, he would have refused himself. He understands that. And then the last one I would make is that, you know, we had as the mayor of this town, a member of the Redifer family. The town council has the ultimate uh authority and responsibility for approving and recommending the estate. Often, any changes to the plan, so um. I, I, I don't, I don't have a problem with it at all. I'm not, I'm not concerned about.
Me neither. I mean, the family owns those properties, but the legal side of it is, I think Jack is involved in two additional properties. So there's plenty of people and it's not on more than three properties.
Right.
I don't have an issue with it. Uh, yes, so your cousin owns one and, you know, your, your niece and nephew, et cetera, but. Yeah, so I don't have an issue with it either.
I, I, I'm sorry, I should have given you.
And if they, the comprehensive development committee is providing advice to us. Um, we have the knowledge of who's providing us with that advice and I think we should be able to consider it.
Right.
But I appreciate you bringing it, so it's public.
Yep.
So could, could I add one thing?
No.
Oh, no, okay.
Who are you? Could you state your name?
So I, I, I don't have a comment about Mr. Redifer. Um, but. Uh, uh, David Jocinski is correct when he says this, the CDP has the force of law. But the intention of the CDP, the best up, uh, uh, the best version of a CDP, it doesn't have, shouldn't have a lot of real. Uh, specific and express standards in it, which could conflict with existing law and then create these legal. Problems. So when you're adopting um ordinances in the future. It, to the extent that they conflict with, with the comprehensive development plan, that's a problem. But the comprehensive development plan oftentimes has generalities or expresses generalities and. And desires, but to the, if it gets too specific. Um, you know, just have that in mind when you're working with a comprehensive development plan. If that, if you come at it with that perspective, it might help you avoid. Future conflicts between the CDP and whatever policies it is that you're, you're proposing.
Uh, it, it, it's a great point. And it, just to kind of recap on what, you know, Commissioner Verzinger said about the. Um, the, the ability for him to remove himself from any vote, especially. You know, we've seen that consistent with Jimmy O'Connor in the planning zoning commission where he's removed himself from that. Um, with that being said, I'll ask if there are any other comments on this document or is there any other changes? These committees are not hearing any, you know, have a motion with the amendments. Uh.
Motion, motion.
Second, to approve with amendments.
No other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so. We'll let your committees know. Uh, that they move forward. Um, number eight. Uh, discuss possible vote to refer in order to vote to refer in ordinance to amend chapter one eighty five zoning in this code of town Dune Beach. Delaware two thousand five as amended by a mending table three of section one eighty five twenty five B. Uses in resort business district permit tents over outside service area. Um, and this is a.
Associated, you know, we've seen that consistent with Jimmy O'Connor in the planning and zoning commission where he's removed himself from that. Um, and and put things forth to hear. So, um, with that being said, I'll ask if there are any other. Comments on this document or is there any other changes to these committees not hearing any? Can I have a motion with the amendments? Uh, that we've.
Motion.
In a second. If no other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so please let your committees know, uh, as they move forward. Um, number eight. Uh, discuss possible vote to refer in order to vote to refer in ordinance to amend chapter one eighty five zoning in this code of the town Dune Beach. Delaware two thousand five as amended by a mending table three of section one eighty five twenty five B. Uses in resort business district to permit tents over outside service area. Um, and this is a, to refer this to the planning and zoning. Um, Commissioner Bauer, can we just give you background on this?
Yeah, I think we have to define what a tent is. Uh, I think we have canopy in our, in our code. But we don't have tent in our code, so I think, I think the wise thing to do is to send it to planning and zoning. Let them define what tent means and take it from there.
Any other conversation?
I guess, I guess what I'm wondering is, we're just today kind of getting through the process of getting all this outdoor dining finally confirmed. And uh, for the most part, they're uncovered. I think there's, there's one with a covering and did the board of adjustment route. Let's get that. And I'm just wondering if maybe we're moving a little bit too fast and. Let's kind of, we have this in permanently, let's kind of continue to see how it goes and then maybe, you know, start adding tents. Tents are great for, for businesses and they can be great for patrons too, but they're great for businesses because in Illinois, weather, you obviously can still have people dining, so. I certainly get the motivation to have that. Um, but all these businesses also have inside space as well, right? Um, that is, that is protected from the elements. And, you know. I agree that if, if we are going to go down that path, we certainly have to decide what's a tent and what's allowed because. Sometimes you end up with something that's, that's pretty darn permanent, that's, that's a tent. But I'm just thinking, we just need to let a little bit more time go by before we kind of do another iteration of outdoor dining and. Kind of further development in these spaces that typically are right above the sidewalk on the street. I, you know, that's just kind of what I'm thinking.
I, excuse me, I was, I was wondering if this came about because there was a restaurant in town that had um. Sales, which aren't quite tents and aren't quite, they're not umbrellas.
Right.
And so the question is, is that okay? And the, these sale things were put up with no permission because it. It fell through the holes of the.
Right, right.
They got permission, I'm sorry.
Okay, from, from a building perspective, they did.
Okay.
Did permit.
If I can add to it, I mean, I have to remind you, it's great until it rains and then it's chaos. If you know anybody who works in the restaurant business. People pick up their plates and running. So a canopy is nice because that will keep the rain from coming down on you. But if the rain's blown in off of the bay or, you know, coming in sideways on you, then you need some sides that you want to pull down. So I, I just think it's, you know, whatever we decide to do. I mean, I, I think we should do it now myself, but. Let's, let's approve what a tent is and then let it be where it is. I mean, the planning zone is going to get involved eventually. If they approve it today or they. Approve it six months from now, they're, they're still going to have to sit and deal with it, so. Uh, so that's my opinion, but that's, I, that, I'd like to motion it that way if I could.
Let me do, just make my own comment here is that, you know, the, what we've just gone through in terms of these conditional use. Um, coming out of the pandemic, you know, hopefully once in a lifetime, as we put things forward, I, I agree, agree with. Commissioner Jocinski, we don't want to go too fast in terms of any type of approval process. On the, on the other side, there's, there's no reason necessarily to not have them at least take a viewpoint on it. And come back to the recommendations, not that we, and we can, you know, table at this level, but I'll, I'll ask council, I mean, what is your take on this, sir?
Well, my take is similar to Mr. Jocinski's that I think this concept is going to require a lot of attention. Um, we don't have a definition, as was stated by, uh, Mr. Bauer, for what a tent is. Um, we don't know um. What uh, an outdoor dining area is either. Those are different things for different entities. Some entities have an outdoor dining area that, as we saw tonight for, because they're conditional uses. Those specifications of, or the dimensions of that outdoor dining area are a matter of record. For those entities that um are legal nonconforming, we don't, we may not have anything in our files that indicate. What, what is the, you know, where does, what's the beginning of the outdoor dining area? What's the end of the outdoor dining area? And, and if, if an ordinance says you can tent your outdoor dining area, where does that, what does that mean? Can you tent? As much as you want. So um. I, I'm not, I wasn't opposed and didn't feel like I needed to, to speak that at this point because. Any, any action on this group is going to require two public hearings and a referral to the planning. So.
Time to go, anyhow.
Yeah, so I think there's plenty of time to get into the weeds on it. If this group felt. That you'd like to take a breath before you go down this road, that's, if the majority of you feel that way, then that's fine too.
And we may, we may feel that way later, but.
Yeah, I, I guess I, I look at it, just to give you a second, Paul, and you can follow up is that, you know, the, the, the concept of tents, and this came up in an earlier conversation I had with people. The first time I had to say the conversation had to do with what's happening on the beach. And the allowance of tents and structures that are bigger than umbrellas and what does a tent mean? And, you know, the, the uh, design now is, it's such that you can have something that weighs four pounds, but yes, it takes up, you know. Forty to four hundred square feet on the beach, so it's not really actually pitching a tent as we did as kids. Um, what I, what I, what I believe or what I look at this resolution is how. Um, how to, how to protect patrons, potentially, potentially protect patrons from rain. At the point they have it, Commissioner Givens' point, what was constructed at Jimmy's is not, is, is more for sun. As I look at it, and it's, it's a, it's pretty, so it's not an issue. Um, but, you know, what does that mean? And I, and I agree with you that there's, there's multiple steps and I, but I do see the, the, one of the jobs of this, you know, the council is to. Um, and this has come up a few times over the last few years is, uh, where does the code, where is the, the, the. The argument against what somebody wants is based upon with the code, even though the code is based upon, you know, some of the history. And what I mean by that is. Somebody wants something, but the code doesn't allow it, it's kind of our job to kind of, to keep the code relevant and current. And that's a bigger conversation for us to evaluate. Um, as, as you've alluded to, some of the, your, the, the code. Um, the charter code asks for potentially some investment to help them uh, I, understand the code. Um, so I think that's part of our job going forward is to, to kind of get rid of the gray and make sort of black and white. So I'm not sure that this helps for, or it's right for wrong timing, so I'll leave it to you guys to. guys to
I'm looking at her, building official back here, and I think we need to give her something that is enforceable. We already have tents that are out there. I mean, if we could define what a tent is, I mean, they look like tents, but I don't think there's a legal term for it. But I'd like to give Dawn something that she can work with sooner than later, I guess, because it's going to come up. Would you like to come up, state your name, where you're from?
Yeah, I'm just going to suggest that she go.
Okay.
Dawn Hanks, building official, the town of Derry Beach. And yes, you're exactly right, we do not have a definitive definition for a tent. Yet our code under definitions does state that if a word or a concept is not defined in our code, then the normal meaning, the normal understanding prevails. So there can be a lot of disagreement and so forth. Anyway, our code does talk about a tent being a structure, whether it's temporary or permanent. And so yet, at the same time, it does make it difficult for the building official to be able to enforce something one way or the other, since our code is not quite definitive. However, in looking at our agenda today, I took the opportunity to contact the state fire marshal office as well as the county. And so that is something that I think we, as an entity, should at least consider what they have to say, whether we agree with it or not. But the state fire marshal has a lot more to say about a tent, a canopy, an awning, and of course Sussex County is looking at it from a permitting standpoint, whether they permit something or not. Would they do plan reviews on it, on that structure that's built? In some cases, they do, but in other cases, they don't. And so that is something that I think that the council does need to realize that other entities could be involved.
Commissioner Verstappen?
Yeah, having listened to all the discussion, I'm tending to agree to a certain extent with Commissioner Jazinski that it may be too early for us to simply go to planning and zoning with this particular draft and say, you know, give us your best judgment on what this ordinance should say. I mean, I think we may want to have some representatives, perhaps, from the fire marshal or other entities come in and talk to us as a council so that we can begin to identify what the issues are and be able to provide better guidance to planning and zoning as they deal with this. I mean, I agree, we can't just sit around and not do anything. This is an issue, we already have tents out there, so I'm not sure what you do in the interim for those that exist already. But it is something we need to deal with, but I think we need to get our arms around it. I mean, I don't, I don't know anything about constructing a tent. I mean, I know when I'm under one, but that's, you know, the extent of my knowledge with respect to tents. So, you know, there have to be some issues, you know, how wind resistant does it have to be? I mean, you have to be concerned about the safety of patrons. What's temporary versus what's permanent? You know, if it's there for seven, eight months, but then it's removed and put back again, you know, is that, how does that fit in as the temporary or permanent? I think there are some issues that need to be discussed, and I think maybe we need to have a discussion of that at the council level before we send this to planning and zoning. I hate to delay something like this, but I think there are enough issues out there that that's maybe the best course for us to follow at this point.
Are you suggesting, Commissioner, that potentially the town building czar inspector gathers some information, brings some information to us as well as from, you know, whether it's the fire marshal from the county to get to the norm or at least what the boundaries are so that we can put together
Yeah, I think so. And if there's a representative willing to come from fire marshal or one of the other county or state entities and, you know, somebody we can question and have our own discussion with them, I think we'd even be even better off. So we might want to consider that as well if it's possible.
And as of this point in time, there's not any, there's no permit or application that's been provided, that's been submitted to the town for a tent, that this would be holding it up? Is that correct or not correct? Mr. Dede?
I think we're going to be expecting some applications coming in, especially with the Board of Adjustment.
So if someone came forward today, we couldn't say no?
I don't know how we could
We haven't find
Or a yes at this point. Or we can't deny something that we don't
Right, exactly.
Well, but if you're, it is, it's a challenging situation, but if you're a legal nonconforming entity, then you can't, you can't change your use without it being a one-time change and without you getting permission from the Board of Adjustment. That's a very extensive, that's a pretty extensive process, and if you pass this ordinance, then they wouldn't have to go to the Board of Adjustment in that circumstance. If you've got an existing conditional use and you want to tent an outside service area, you're going to have to come in and ask for amendment to your existing conditional use.
I just think that's, this is all part of what P&amp;Z should do. I mean, I think that's up to them to bring in fire marshals and everybody else. I mean, I don't think that's a town commissioner. I'd like to get something clean back from planning and zoning and whatever input P&amp;Z gets, that's, you know, that's their job. I mean, that's, I don't think that's up to us. Now, if we feel that they didn't do their due diligence, then we're going to reject it, but I'm trusting P&amp;Z to do their due diligence and get right. I just, I just think the sooner we get it settled, the better off, because somebody could put an application in tomorrow morning and say, all right, sorry, guys, you didn't find it, too late.
Well, just, I mean, besides what Fred said about the existing nonconforming, all of the restaurants that we just approved are conditional uses. So if they wanted to do something, it would have to come before us as well anyway. So right now, we kind of do have the discretion, not over every single one, but over most of them, it would not be, it would not really be an issue because it has to come back to us anyway, whether it's existing nonconforming or just a conditional use restaurant, to get some tent-like thing up there. You know, the outdoor dining works really well to date, and I guess my take on it is, you know, we're just today getting the last of them kind of in a permanent thing. Let's just get, let's just give it some time and then try to figure out at a later date, what do we want to do about tenting or are we even going to allow these to be tented, you know? Because I think a lot of people, what they like about the outdoor dining is that they're not tented.
Open air.
It's the open air. But from a restaurant owner perspective, I get the, I get the whole climate weather thing, you know? It makes a big difference to them. So I just think that we need to let some time kind of go by. That's my take.
I would like to propose that we bring this back to the town council as an issue for the November meeting, to have the discussion and really delve into this issue a lot more deeply and then provide guidance to planning and zoning. And I think we can define the issues for them, I think we can give them a better sense of what it is we would like them to do, and I think we'll get a better product if we do it that way. It is a bit of a delay, I don't know that it's more than a month delay, I don't think it needs to be more than a month delay, but again, I think we need to have that additional discussion.
I tend to agree, only from the perspective of there needs to be more information and further clarified and defined for our code from, you know, I can think of a situation in which we approved a structure in town and as long as their windows were shut by a certain period of time and those windows became patio doors. And so I just would want to have something as large as a tent being approved without understanding what a tent means. So, but if there's a motion or is it, we could table it?
I'd motion to approve sending of the P&amp;Z and let them do their due diligence. I don't know if I have a second.
I don't know.
That's my motion.
Recording in progress.
Do we have to start over?
Recording stopped.
You're fine.
Okay. Hearing, we have a motion from Commissioner Bauer. Is there a second? Not hearing any, I'm going to ask if this gets tabled. I'm just saying, if you can reach out to the building or to the fire marshal and any other officials that can help us with this in terms of other municipalities, that also might be helped in terms of what has been approved or not approved in their areas so that we can have a definitive element of what is a tent moving forward and put it on the, and ask you to put it on the November agenda, please. Number nine, review September financials. I have, from a commissioner's perspective, the financials were posted on the website. I reviewed, I had, you know, a few comments that I had sent back to Ms. Hall in the town, which she kind of, what she did, and just as clarity, whenever I see the acquisition of equipment or an asset, my first reaction is that's not a, it's not a P&amp;L element, it's a balance sheet element, but as she was told by auditors, it's a process, it goes on to record it, and then it comes back off into a fixed asset, which we'll see is an adjust, a change moving forward. We also had out of the last, from the last meeting, conversations of the proper use of the funds from the state in regards to the moving of the 5G poles. After her review, it was agreed that that is consistent with the language that we can use the funds that we're paying to CTC for that consultant to use those funds, and I've asked her to make that adjustment in the next financials. If the audit comes back and determines that that was, that we did not make the right decision, we obviously can make that reclassification entry at that point in time, but we are spending money this year as well as approximately $19,000 in the prior period that we spent on this, on the 5G pole issue. So hopefully those, we'll see how those things resolve. I'll open up to commissioners for any other additional comments or questions in regards to the financial statements. Commissioner Verstappen?
Yeah, what I would like to do for the next meeting, maybe the meeting after that, is get a better sense and hopefully a better projection of where we think we're going to be with respect to transfer tax and accommodation tax. And I don't know what resources you have. I've looked at the hotel tax, and I think I said this at the last meeting, it looks like we're going to be okay. I kind of reprojected that real quickly this afternoon, and I think it looks like we will come in pretty much right on budget. I can't match that up very well with some of the statistics that we heard earlier from Carol, but nevertheless, I think based on what we've received in the past and having changed the percentage of the tax and what we're getting now, I think we're going to be okay. But I am concerned about transfer tax and accommodations tax. I know that accommodations taxes are just coming in now and you haven't totaled those yet, but we're, you know, we're really six months through, we're into the seventh month at this point.
Mayor?
Sure.
Okay, I was prepared for you.
Good, good.
This time.
State of the game, we're from
I'm at the Cape Canaveral High School right now, waiting for the break. We have made our budget on parking permits. Yes, we have made, based on the October activity so far, as of this morning, we've made budget on billing permits for the year, thanks to Kate's getting it set up to pay online. It is amazing the amount of accommodations tax that is coming in online. We have made budget for accommodations tax in October, as of today.
Wait, for the month of, for the
For the whole year.
Okay.
For the whole year, we hit budget, because so much is coming in online. I get it, dinging it two in the morning before paying it. Based on what we got for transfer tax that hit our bank account the other day, we are at 75% for the year, of the year's budget, leaving only about $30,000 we have to hit for the next five months per ad, you know, per month average, to make budget for transfer tax. We're averaging about $40,000 to $50,000 a month. We've had a couple higher, so that one we should have made. The hotel tax, I was just able to yesterday take for every hotel, every month that they've paid, and compare last year to this year, there's a few that I'm not really happy with. I don't like, but that's just, I don't trust anybody. But it's looking, it was hard to project since we only had six months where we would be, but it looks like, I agree, we're going to be right about budget on that one. Due to the new software, the new procedure for bonfires, that's going to go down because we are returning the $100 without them having to call in if they clean up. We're able to do that. But our dog, thanks to the dog ambassador, our dog licenses are through the roof. And with being able to do that online, it has also helped. So those things have helped, you know, take everything. All in all, we've done really good so far. And I wouldn't go making major plans, but I think, I think the budget's pretty good.
So we're still looking for like $150,000 in transfer tax, if I heard you right?
Right.
Okay.
But with averaging $40,000 to $50,000 a month, we got $65,000.
Yeah, just, I mean, the market is slowing down. I mean, interest rates are continuing to go up, and I don't know what the inventory looks like right now, and I don't know how active any of the real estate agents are at this point, but my sense is things are really going to, hopefully not come to a grinding halt, but have a severe slowdown over the next few months.
I agree, and Gary, if you remember when we went through the budget process last year, I mean, I just looked at the quick numbers, as of this point, as of September of 2021, we had $1,075 already in transfer tax, we're at $460 right now. When we went through the budget process, we anticipated there being a slowdown, and I, you know, I think we put it from the budget from 770 to 7, I think it's one of those elements we're going to need to look at when we go through the 2024 budget further in terms of what inventory is going to be out there, how many teardowns do we really have, what's going to happen on the million, how many million of dollars we need to actually sell in order to achieve a 600? The nice thing is that we do have the increase in the accommodation as well as the increase in the hotel tax that we can, in terms of funds coming in as we go from two and a half to two and a half, two and a half to three in the future as those things slow down, so.
Shane, a quick question. Do we know how many properties are sold that we just haven't received or recognized directly from yet?
It's, since it all goes through the county, I would have to ask them as to
What's outstanding? I mean, we have, we have a couple hundred thousand outstanding, we may, I don't know.
Right, I, what I got in the bank yesterday was for the, for the September property sales. But if something's sold last day of September, the tax may not hit till October and
It's October of August.
Right.
Very good. I mean, as we know, this is a, this is a cash basis, so what we're seeing in September will be as of August, October will be as of September and so forth. I had just a quick question for Kate. I said, Kate, do you want to, is there any update that you want to provide in terms of what, from the software that we put in place in regards
I would, I'd like to do that next month.
Okay.
If I can with you, I'll have a better number as far as accommodations tax, so I can kind of weigh all that in.
Perfect, thank you. Any other? Okay. Number 10, town manager comments.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. So real quick, following up on the audit with the IT security updates, and there was a question from somebody on the audit committee, is the town really doing these updates? So Kate is overseeing the IT piece, she's doing a great job on it, so we have two routers that are going to be ordered. This will give us greater security in our Wi-Fi for our town employees. We've upgraded to password verification. We did a phishing campaign, when I say we did, the company did a phishing campaign, you all received an email, some may have responded to it, most of you did not, so thank you, that was a phishing campaign that is being done. Upgraded some of our other systems to a Ninja type of system, if you need more clarification on that, Kate can provide that to you, and roll-based access folders, which are, which will update, help protect all our safe data. So we are continuing to do what the audit found on our IT piece, and I just want to make sure that, that the individuals on the audit committee that asked me about that particularly, that they know that we are moving forward with it. Kate overseeing that program.
If I just make one comment to the rest of the council, Phil and I discussed this, I don't know, it was a month or so ago, the IT, the security system, it is, will be transferable to the new location, so it wasn't like it was a one-time expense that we have to worry about when we move forward and it'll be able to move with us.
Any questions on that? We did have our full-time, our part-time, full-time pay clerk assistant, she did resign, she found a full-time job with benefits, she took that. We are, we are, we've had an advertisement in the paper looking for somebody replacing. We have a tent in right now doing payroll. So I just want to let, give you an update on that. Any questions? Holiday lights out on the Central Island, will be back this year, they will be turned in, turned over November 26th to correspond with the holiday celebration up at Pfeiffer's. up at Pfeiffer's. Denrec update. So I asked Jesse Hayden, who's in charge of Dunes, he says Monday at 11:00 a.m. is when the Corps of Engineers is taking the bids for the, the beach replenishment. So hopefully we have an update in the next couple of weeks after that. Concessions for the beach. Lineum's contract was up this year. It's posted right now in the New Journal. Ashley's done a nice job getting it in the New Journal, the Cape Gazette. Right now, it is with garbage, which is 100 trash cans that they are responsible for. We'll wait and see if somebody takes that on. We have got a lot of questions, are the shacks included? Are the umbrellas and chairs? Of course, none of that's included. It's all by, by Lineum. So that is out there now.
Can I ask for clarification on that? Is the requirement that put forth that there are umbrellas and chairs and shacks as part of it, or is it just the general beach concession? I was just curious if somebody could come in, even if, if they didn't have, but they were required to make sure that umbrellas and chairs were there.
So the contract actually spells out umbrellas, chairs, and I think even raths are still in there, even though that Lineum does no longer supply the raths. But they are, they are spelled out in the, in the posting. So if you go to the posting, you go to our town website, click on it, it spells all that out. We really haven't changed the contract from the one that Lineum operated on for the last several years. But if nobody bids with garbage on the beach, we are going to end up doing, doing a different contract and put it out for bid without, without garbage on the beach. And then I've been working with, with our maintenance person, Don Richard, to figure out how we are going to supplement that. I've looked at Fenwick and Bethany and what they do, Amber Hoben, what they do with their garbage. They don't actually have cans on the beach, or they do have cans on the beach, and how they get their garbage off the beach. So that, that is a possibility, just to mention.
So when is the current deadline of what's been posted in terms of the concession contract?
So it's three weeks from...
November 4th.
November 4th, and we've had no one respond as of yet? Okay, okay. Just curious.
At the end of Rodney Street, Blue Water has purchased Pier Point Marina. We actually have the right-of-way down the middle of the street continues to the bulkhead. Blue Water has asked to do a new bulkhead across the, the bulkhead that is there now, not to make any adjustments on the ramp, but just from the bulkhead, from the, the ramp over to the property line. So they needed our permission, the town's permission, to go ahead and do, replace that part of the bulkhead. I signed off on that Denrec permission so they can go ahead and do that work to replace that bulkhead. In no way does it commit us to giving up any of our rights to that area at the end. I refer, talked to council about that. He agreed. Building official agreed also, and that's why I signed off on it. I'm just letting you know that. Okay. We, Jim and I are meeting with Remington Burnet on Monday at 11, 11 o'clock to start looking at infrastructure and the pump house. We really need to do some repair where the cement is separating down there on Bellevue and Bayard, and also look at finishing up the stormwater cup. There's a couple other areas in town for stormwater, and then also going back and looking at Reed Avenue there at the bay with those. And that's, we wanted to wait until the season was over, so they're coming in on the, at 11 o'clock on Monday to, to work that. This past week, I was asked to go down to Fenwick Island to talk about how we have been able to be somewhat successful with our Center Island project, how we get the funding for that, how that all takes place, with our crosswalks, with the markings that we have down on, on the roads, and reducing the speed. So I was able to talk to Fenwick Island about that because they're having some of the same challenges that we have here. And then over, I took Tammy over to Lewis. We were asked to speak with their committee about parking. They're looking at different options for their parking. They had a lot of questions on how we handle parking here. So we were able to, to go to both of those, both of those towns to provide how we're doing it here in, in Dewey Beach. And any questions? That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from commissioners?
Great job. Thank you.
Lieutenant Hocker.
Okay, so we've been pretty busy in the month with extra events. Police have helped out with traffic direction in, sorry, traffic direction in, for the triathlon, Dewey goes pink. We also staffed the Jazz Festival for security slash medical assistance with them. And then recently, the Realtor Convention they had at the Hyatt. They expected over 650 visitors. We were there right in early to direct traffic and make sure everybody could park where they needed to be. All that incident, everything went very well. A few residents were, you know, a little bit upset about the traffic and not being able to turn at the intersections, but that's every year, every, every event that we have, and everybody seems to get along with it very well. Once again, our, our celebrity, Jack Kane, was recognized for his heroic actions in the fire on Bayard Avenue, on BFW down in Ocean City. He was also recognized in the FBI's law enforcement training bulletin. He was in a, in an article there, so he continues to be recognized. That's all I have. Any questions at all?
Yes, sir.
He's doing a great job.
We'll move on to commissioner comments. Commissioner Bauer.
No comments at this time.
Commissioner Givings.
I just want to acknowledge how wonderful it is to have Dewey Beach providing leadership to other coastal towns, having you come down and show them how things are done. That's a big change from how it was.
There you go. See the day.
Commissioner...
Yes, I did. I, I foretold that long ago.
No, no comments.
Commissioner Persiger.
No comments.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to echo Commissioner Givings' comments. You know, it's, it's wonderful to hear from not only people in town, but people from other towns, how well the town is working. Obviously, you know, that's part of the staff that we have and the leadership that we have, and it's all one team. The only comment, or the only new comment I wanted to provide is that from the Association of Coastal Towns, it's just more of an updated information, there continues to be, there's a transfer of, of the role of president of the Association of Coastal Towns that will go from South Bethany to Dewey Beach as of January 1st. So we'll have that for the, for the 2023 year. Those meetings will be here on the, the first Thursday at 1:00, 1 to 3 as we move forward. Just as an update, the, the big issue right now from an act perspective is the offshore wind farms, US Wind in Orsted. In conversations that I've had, multiple, not disclose necessarily who, but from a state level, for, for federal level, state level, obviously everyone's for, it's almost like a not in my backyard situation, everybody wants these. I'd encourage anybody who's interested, last week, 60 Minutes had an interview process with a town out, in UK, in which Orsted has put in these wind farms, but also positive and negative. So if you have the opportunity to Google that, I think it's educational, going about 10 minutes. And I'll keep you abreast of, yes, sir.
On that same subject, I, I was sort of, one of my neighbors here asked me a question about the wind farms, and he was looking at some structure that was right off the beach in Dickinson and saying, oh my God, we're going to have, you know, these kinds of structures all along the shoreline here. And I said, gee, I don't think that's right. And then I did some more research on that, and thanks to the town, there is a good link on the town website to information about the, the wind farms. It's very helpful, and it makes it very clear that we're not talking about 300 or 400 yards off the beach, we're talking about, you know, 10, 15, maybe on 20 miles. So I think that's important, to give people a perspective of what you would actually be able to see from the beach. I think that still needs to be clarified a little bit. I mean, it could be something like that, or, you know, it could be something bigger than that, but I think that's, that's an important perspective that people need to understand.
Yeah, and it's also the, it's a certain, it is outside of Dewey Beach or Sussex County or state of Delaware's control, those wind farms or leases that have come from the federal government to those companies. And so it's, it's nothing we did, just so that's clear. With that, I'd like a motion to convene, or to, actually, I'd like the motion to convene an executive session.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's go to executive session.
So we're going into executive session to discuss personnel matters, is that right?
Yes. Oh, of course. So there are conveniences, executive session pursuant to Title 29, discuss, it says on individual citizen's qualification to hold a job with this personal matters. Section 29, commissioners will be meeting in executive session to hold strategy sessions involving some legal advice with respect to some pending litigation. And third, pursuant to section 29, to look at possible site acquisitions.
Very good. Who was the second on that motion?
Going to executive session.
Commissioner.